So, welcome everybody to another work session on the land use code. And for those in the audience, this is an opportunity for the county commissioners to work with staff regarding the code. There won't be any public comment or input today. We appreciate you being here. Carl has spent some, some time doing the updates we asked of him, so we're gonna go through that. And at the end, I'd like to see if we couldn't set a target date for our review of all this in anticipation of sending it back to the planning commission. Kind of get a bookend out there. Having said all that, Carl, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I, I took kind of the excerpts that we went over last time, took the red line out, so it was a little easier to read, and then made some, some edits based on how I understood your, your, your direction at the last meeting. I've highlighted those sections so to kind of, you know, track along, so, you know, on, on the screen, so that might hopefully... And if there's other things, then we can go through those as we get to them. The first is the kind of the first part of chapter two where it's, it's giving an overview of what the different symbols in the, in the land use matrix speak about. Remove site plan review. And then adjusted, the A means allowed use. These uses are allowed by right, meaning no site plan review is required. However, owners are responsible to comply with applicable standards, and then refer to chapter eight, section one. Do you wanna go to chapter eight first, or, or before the land use matrix? Cause I think that does have an effect on, you know, As versus Ls in the matrix.
If you think so, let's do that.
Okay.
So... Can I... Is this part of the handouts you provided?
Yes. So then, um, have it...
They refer to... What was emailed to you? And it's VOC super accession B fifteen, no ready.
Right. Okay. So, what I've done here is, again, taking out the site plan review, created a, an introductory part of chapter eight, which is the, the going through the, the processes. And having A generally standards that basically everything is subject to these standards. Setbacks, easements, prescriptive and descriptive, recorded encumbrances such as plat notes, water supply. I added a sentence here, which actually took from Montrose County and then adjusted it for how our, our land use code is drafted. Says, "Any standard set forth in this code not met by the property owner or operator shall constitute a violation of this code and shall be enforced as set forth in chapter thirteen, enforcement and remedies."
How could that be read differently?
You mean in how somebody might say that they are in violation, or what, in what context?
I don't know yet. That will be misinterpreted, I guarantee this.
Okay.
So, let's flag that.
Just a first shot at it, so...
Yeah, let's flag that, keep going.
Cause I, I, I thought I understood that that's what you wanted, with something of caveat of if you don't comply, what happens?
Yeah. You're correct.
Okay.
Let's do what we do want.
Okay. So then the next part is other approvals that may be required. This isn't an exhaustive list, but it tries to highlight, highlight the things that do come up in, in development from time to time. More often would be the, the electrical and plumbing. There's also Clean Water Act, Clean Air Act, less, less often, Undanger Species Act, not, we haven't dealt with that much here. FEMA has put that in there because it's really related to flood plan regulations, which is the next section. Adopted county codes and ordinances such as flood plan regulations, the pre-hid, the overlay districts for highway ninety-two, highway fifty, and then making reference to the, the IGAs, the United political governmental agreements. As well as county resolutions that require permits for activities on public land or within public right of way. So, that applies to all development, whether it's allowed, limited, conditional, any development in Delta County. The idea is that, that this, this applies. Well, it may apply, let me put it that way, if it's applicable. A lot of this stuff may not be applicable in a lot of cases. So then from there, going into the allowed use, and, and this is where the list that we were, were talking about last meeting, as far as allowed uses are subject to section A above, as applicable. But then the following procedures shall be completed in succession, which is, this is out of the development application order. So this is bringing that language in, into the land use code to where then that ordinance could be repealed. Access permit, assigning an address, and then the OWTS permit, and referencing where that is specified in more detail in chapter seven, which we haven't got to yet, but... So that, that's how I kind of envisioned building what we were talking about in, into the land use code procedurally.
Do you wanna stop there and go off to comments?
Yes, please.
I, I, I don't think this is necessarily the wrong approach, you know, we're, we're still, I mean, we still have yet to get to chapter thirteen and resolve the issues in that one, so...
Correct, yes.
So I, I, I don't think this is necessarily the wrong approach. I think it's just a matter of, of making sure that we, we adjust the chapter thirteen appropriately. You know, cause once again, I've, I've said a hundred times, you know, allowed doesn't mean illegal, and I think, I think anybody reasonably understands that, so...
And I mean, yeah, I think that's gonna be, chapter thirteen is gonna be the, a real conversation, and how it works. If somebody builds it, they say they build a house, and they don't wanna pay for a tap, even the water's there, so they put in a cistern. It's a violation of, of the land use code. What do we do? People, I guess, you know, worst case, you could say tear it down, but I don't think that's realistic, right? So what, what do we do? And that's where the, that's where the enforcement section is gonna be very, very important as far as how that works, and how that process works. Giving them an opportunity to correct before getting into penalties.
And a cistern would cost as much as a water tap, wouldn't it?
No, 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 certainly depending on where you're at. You get some of these outreach areas, and some of these water companies, and taps, taps and infrastructure can be pretty outrageous. But that's also why we, we talked about that language before, about the hardship language as an option.
Right, there's avenues for variance for the cistern, if they're, you know... And that, that, obviously, all that ties in. There's different tools for different avenues there. Say if somebody built over the property line, well, now you've pulled in the neighboring property into the problem. That is a potential solution as well, is, is to do a boundary line adjustment, if that, if that neighboring property owner is willing.
And we had a couple of instances last year like that.
Yes, correct, yep, yep. I think you saw a couple come before, maybe come before you, but we've, we've had to address those, yes.
And I think one of them was a developer himself.
Right.
And, and, yeah, I can tell you the last six years, we've done a number of them.
Building an easement, or...
Built in an easement, built over a property line, you know, and then, you know, we, we've got a pretty good track record. They come back to the board, want us to, to change something on their plan, or change setback, and we told them, no, this was, this was your mistake, you've gotta fix it. But, yeah, it's...
Okay, so...
And that's the problem with this exercise, is enforcement and what else, the unintended consequences.
And I think the, the kind of the approach that we're taking here is, is to get this part settled.
Yep.
And then look at how we wanna enforce it, and kind of, at the end, it's at the end of the land use code, but, I mean, unless you wanna, we can, and we can talk about that when we're talking about kind of the next, next sections you wanna go through.
Well, we still, I mean, it's took a while for Mr. Bear to work up that chapter thirteen ones too, so...
Right, so we don't have to go chapter one through fourteen, we could, you know, if there's a different order, like we've just kinda hit chapter eight here, a piece of it. And that, you know, so we don't, you know, we can talk about what makes sense there, to kind of walk through it. I mean, the key chapters for, that I, is, as, like, even with, with the planning commissioners, when they, when I meet with them, it's, you know, chapter two, obviously where all the land uses are, chapter seven and eight is where the procedures are, and chapter twelve is the subdivision. The other stuff is more technical. Chapters four and five get into the technical standards. Of course, chapter fourteen, the definitions. So, you know, when you kind of start breaking the code down that way, it's not what, something that you wanna start at page one and read through.
No.
It doesn't really work that way.
Well, I, I think, you know, I think that's why this, this is a good exercise to go through this. I think when you, when we get done with this, when you go back to chapter two, try to work to chapter two, and hopefully we can get, get to chapter thirteen from there.
Okay.
Because so much of this ties back into chapter thirteen. But, but, you know, we've still gotta get, we've still gotta get through chapter two, and that's, that's the biggest chapter in the, in the whole thing, so...
Right, cause it, and you'll see what I've done in the matrix is, there's a couple uses that are the U-specific standards that identify site plan review. So, I, I thought maybe putting those in a matrix, so all of those that have allowed, limited, whatever is, is in the matrix. And so, that might be the segue into going into the matrix here.
If we do adopt this approach, Carl, and then chapter eight, section two, all these different, say, Clean Water Act, we do need to reference US EPA. Specific language in that.
Okay, reference specific, where, where they would need to look, something, okay.
Don't spend the time looking out till we, we get to that point.
Okay.
And I, I'd really like to, I'd like to set up a joint work session with City Delta before we get to adoption points, so we can have a discussion over those overlay zones. Because, you know, we've discussed the changes that need to be made there. And I, I, you know, there may be a repeal that's necessary, and those overlay zones get left out of this too.
Well, we got two overlay zones, we wanna do each, or...
Yeah, I mean, they're highway ninety-two, highway fifty, so it's, it's, we don't know if City Delta for...
Effectively, what they, they require building permits in those two overlay districts. That's really what those ordinances do, and so... And your, your suggestion is having that conversation with the city...
We need to have that conversation with the city.
Rather than adopting land use code with them in there, if we're not going to proceed that way.
Right, yeah, there, I mean, there's, there's no sense, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna go through the IGA process. We would technically have to re-adopt if we change these, these ordinances. So I, I just assume get it all done at once.
Okay. Okay.
Excellent.
Okay, so we'll go ahead, start going through the table.
So where do you wanna go back to?
Uh, table two B, the matrix.
And these are all where we left them after the meeting the other day.
There's a couple changes, I'll highlight that, like, in fact, the first one, this duplex and triplex. So the Ls are where you, you left it for duplex and triplex. What wasn't identified in this table is the additional residences and communal living. It was referred to in, later in chapter two, in the U-specific standards, it talked about site plan review. So, do we, do you want it as a separate line item, or, I mean, cause really, you know, whether it's attached or detached, a duplex or triplex would be attached units. Additional residences, communal living can be separate single-family residences. Which also opens a question as far as, when it says single-family detached, that's for the first single-family residence? I think having that clarification, and then once you have that second, third, fourth, whatever, even though it's a detached, single-family home, it's subject to the additional residences of communal living. That's how I've read the land use code as it is right now. But I think having that conversation as far as how you intend it, is, is, this is a, a good time to have that. So there are a couple things there.
What do you think, Don?
Well, we, I mean, we, we...
With me saying the family detached means, uh, you're gonna put a mother-in-law house, and then you're done, you can't have another mother-in-law house on the same...
Mother-in-law house would effectively be, could be, be an accessory dwelling unit. So you, you'd have, you'd still have the single-family residence, and you'd have an, an accessory dwelling unit as allowed uses, that's what we went over last time. The question is then, what, you know, there's been some comments about, well, I can have multiple single-family dwellings. Well, that's correct, but then you go under the additional residences, communal living, in the way I, I was reading, I've been reading the land use code.
So I, I kinda, I'm... I, I think we need to, we need to make sure we have the definitions for additional residences and the definition of communal living spelled out. Because...
Go ahead.
Because additional, additional residences is probably gonna look a heck of a lot different than a communal living.
Yes, and you'll see, I, I, in some of these other cases, I'd have split them apart because they are different, even though they were grouped the same way in the, in the matrix previously. So we could separate additional residences from communal living.
Cause you'd wanna make sure if you had thirty acres, you didn't have thirty homes, and each an additional residence, without going through the subdivision process.
But, but, but then again, I mean, if, you know, we're... I, I don't know that I agree with that situation. You know, somebody, somebody wants to put additional residents on their property, you know, we've, we've had discussions, kids, parents, whatever. You know, maybe they've got multiple kids, they got, you know, one, they already put an ADU, they wouldn't need to add another ADU, sitting for another set of kids.
Right.
You know, I, I don't know that we need to force them to go through a subdivision process if they're gonna do that.
I'm not asking you to go through subdivision.
But, the, you know, the, the challenge I have here is, you know, it's not so much, I mean, if, if Mike Lane wants to buy forty acres and, and put four different resident, forty different residences out there for all his kids, that, that's his prerogative, it's his property. What I'm concerned about is that when Mike does that, he's got proper access. He's not gonna have, run forty families through a single entrance. He's gonna make sure he's, he's got everything safe for that to happen. I mean, we... I, I do...
So...
We're not disallowing, we're saying it has to go through a limited review process.
Right, no, and, and, and don't get me wrong, I'm not, I'm not denying it. I don't, I don't think, I don't think sending something through a limited review process is a bad deal. I, I, that's, that's not my, my thing at all. As long as it's understood upfront that this additional resident does not mean it's a subdivision, you know?
And, yeah.
That, you know, and I think, I think we've, we've got instruments to make that clear, we've done that in the past.
Well, and there is the, in the U-specific standards, later in chapter two, we haven't gotten into the, those specific standards yet, for additional residences or communal living. The way it starts right now, on twenty twenty-one, is in general, one residence is allowed per lot. Additional residences may be constructed, et cetera, if they meet certain standards. It wasn't clear that it needed some level of review. We had, we've had it as site plan review, I mean, the, the main part of the, the exercise for this matrix is that limited use versus allowed.
Right.
Because there's these standards that would need to be followed, and, and to, I think to the point of what you're trying to get, what are those standards? In the twenty twenty-one land use code, it did actually require the standards, in, in, with the expectation to subdivide later. I revise this in that not everybody's gonna want to subdivide later, so we, I don't think we need to do that. You don't have to have the homes thirty feet apart, so you can have fifteen-foot setbacks between them. You know, if they want them ten feet apart, that's fine. They won't be able to separate those with a subdivision, but, you know...
And, and that's, and that's, that's my, my challenge here, the philosophical challenge is, you know, we've got a lot of farms and ranches out there right now. I could, I could list off a bunch of them, that over the years have added a second house, or a third house, because family or whatever, I, I...
There's nothing in here that limits the number. I mean, so, as long as you have water, you can create the access, you can create the, the wastewater treatment for what's needed. The additional residence or communal living does not set a cap as far as how many units.
And, and so, so back to my original point. I, I, I personally, I've got no problem with that being a, a, a limited use, just because we need to make sure that they're safety dressed, make sure there's proper, we're not on a blind corner, whatever. But back to my original point, separating out the communal living part. Because communal living is, I mean, could be construed as a different animal, you know, I, I could...
It can't, right now, it's all lumped, it, it has been lumped together, and there's no separate definition of that.
You know, me, me and six of my buddies could set up a little communal living facility with a, you know, a well-stocked bar, restroom facility, shower facility, kitchen. And then we all live in campers or small houses around it, you know, I, I mean, it's, it's, but there's, there's different needs at that. There's different, there's gonna be different...
So what are you, where are you going with this, Don? Do you want a separate line item for communal living?
I wanna separate, I, I think a separate line item and, and definition for communal living.
And definition?
As well as the additional residence?
Do you want the additional residence separated from duplex, triplex, or is that okay, just... Whether it's additional residence, whether it's attached or detached?
I, I think they could be combined, I think they're...
Okay, that's what I hit on here, okay.
So how would you treat communal living differently in this matrix? Would they all be limited with notice, allowed?
I, I think, I think they, you know... I'm, I'm still, I mean, this, this communal living, when, when we developed this code and started at nineteen developing this code, we had this discussion many times, trying to come up with the right answer. And I, I, I don't know what that answer is, because, you know, do you have a, a number you cut it off at, that you're limited without notice? You go beyond this, you need notice, what is that number? What, I mean, we don't have, it's not a, it, it's not a, a standard, you know? It's something that actually is a little bit unique to Delta County compared to a lot of other places. So, I, I, it's, it's tough to look at other places and say, what do you do for your standard on communal living?
I, I wasn't specifically looking for it when I was looking at, like Mesa County and Montrose County, and, you know, what, as I was doing the, kind of the homework, based on the things that you flagged, I don't, yeah, I don't remember seeing communal living, that doesn't mean it wasn't there, I wasn't specifically looking for it, but...
Well, and, and, you know, we had, you know, we had some, some questions about, uh, one up, up in, up in my district, up here, the upper end of Surface Creek, you know, or, you know, there, when it was all going down, there were a lot of questions about how we handled it. And it's a unique situation, and, and I think it should have, should have unique standards it needs to be, so...
So, to me, this, we can keep, keep additional living and communal living in the same category on the matrix. But the standards and the definitions need to have some better clarification, is that correct? Because it's still gonna be a limited use. And in the smaller zone districts, it's limited use with notification to neighbors. Is that correct?
You could do it either way. I mean, if you wanna look at communal living as a different type of living, maybe having it as a separate line item makes sense.
I'm not opposed to that, but, but the...
Cause, you know, rather than tie it into additional residences, cause that, you know, can, you know, has a different context, I think is what we've been talking about. Maybe separating those.
See, and I could, I could...
Even though they're, they're, they, they have the same level of review.
I, I could see, I could see the additional residences being separate with, with Ls across the board.
No notice.
No notice.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if, you know, if somebody's on their, their twenty-ninth additional, then, yeah, maybe, maybe then the director needs to put it for notice.
So this notice really comes in for the communal living component of it?
Notice comes in for the new living, because, because there are so many different factors that play into that. You know, it might be innocuous, it might be, you know, two or three people, it might be less use than a, a standard, single-family dwelling. But it could be dozens of, of families living. So you just, I, I, I think that's, it needs to be separated, it needs probably be limited with notice on anything for communal living.
That's fine. I still think additional residences in the rural industrial, in the eight, two, five, and one, need notification. If you got a one-acre lot and you wanna put a dip in that second home...
You're not, you're not gonna, you're not gonna do that anyways, cause you don't have, you're sorry to...
We don't know that. Variance in specialized systems, so all we're doing is letting the neighbors know. We have this air on the side of those. In fact, it's unworkable, we'll find out. But notice is always good.
Somewhere where there's a property mine in, or...
Yep, we're not denying, we're just saying that those in the median area get the opportunity to know what's going on. One acre is pretty small for two, two homes.
There's, we'll need to get a sense of a consensus on, on that.
Mike? We're talking about notice for additional residences on rural industrial, commercial, and the eight, two, five, and one.
Well, if a commune is going in next to me, I'd like to be noticed.
But if we, so if we separate that out...
I think we agree on the commune. I think that communal living, you know, we can, we can, we can do notice on that across the board. The question is the additional residences.
I probably wanna be noticed also.
Five acre and above, it's, it's a limited use for you, with no notice.
I would still wanna be noticed.
All, all the way across, or just on the smaller categories?
Smaller categories.
Does that include A five, or not A five?
Yeah.
Mike thinks A five, I would disagree with you.
I, I disagree on A five, our, our maps are too spread out. We got large acre parcels in the A five, but...
So consensus on two point five and, and one?
Yes.
That's what I'm hearing? And rural industrial and...
Okay.
Consensus on that?
Okay.
And then on five? No, no? Yes?
No, it'd be fine.
Okay, alright, so...
It's still, we, we could still, the director could still say, this has an impact, we're gonna notice maybe at, on A five and above.
Okay, and then communal living is also, the, the same then as additional residences, where it's limited in A thirty-five, A twenty, A five, notice for rural industrial, commercial, and the residential?
No, the, the communal is...
Notice all the way across?
Notice all the way across.
Okay. Okay. Alright. Moving down to the next, it was a single line item that had assisted living, congregant care, or nursing home. So, after kind of looking at how, at some of the, the other, other types of codes, and taking in some other, other input, thought maybe separating those into three different categories, kind of similar to what we were just talking about. So there's the residential assisted living, up to eight people, non-related. So if you have, obviously if you have a lot of people, it's your family, it doesn't, that wouldn't matter, that's, but that's an allowed use. So the congregant care is a type of residential treatment facility. And I just, I took a, a swag at, you know, limited with notice in A thirty-five, A twenty, conditional use in A five, limited in rural industrial, commercial, and conditional in A, in, in the two point five and the one acre, and then nursing home being conditional across the board.
Well, first review, it looked out of place for limited use, congregant care, rural industrial, commercial, limited, but that's still, but thinking it through, that makes sense. Why no notice on that?
On the rural industrial commerc, cause it, it, it's a type of, it could be looked at as a commercial type of facility?
And this, you know, this is independent of state or federal statutes?
Correct, yeah, it gets to a certain point, and, and the, the state regulate, regulations kick in.
I have no issues with that, you guys?
I'm G.
Okay. Um. You'd ask to, you'd flagged farmworker housing?
I have another question on that, I think we, you're gonna add those definitions for?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll split those definitions out for those, for those three different uses, right? Um, so, e- effectively, kinda what I, as I was going through it, a re- residential assisted living, be kind of elderly or infirm needing or wanting health and performing routine daily activities. Um, nursing home, to house and treat people who need protective oversight and personal service. Um, and then the residential treatment facility, live-in healthcare facility providing therapy for abuse disorders, or substance disorders like, like substance abuse. Um. So, I don't, I just, again, kind of by initial review, but I'll, I'll flesh those definitions out and we'll come back and have that conversation.
Thank you.
Um, farmworker housing, you'd flag this to see, to kind of talk about any thresholds or tiers. I wasn't finding anything locally, um, where there's something specifically about farmworker housing. They tend to look at it as any other type of housing, um, it's kind of the way that I, I was reading the, the other zoning codes. Um, as I did mention, in, in California, the state statute does, um, basically allow up to twelve beds, or twelve units or thirty-six beds, um, for farmworker housing without, it basically exempts it from local, local review. So, I don't know if you wanna use that as a threshold, or, again, I wasn't really finding anything, so I, I just, I highlighted it, but I didn't have any good response for it.
I. You know, once again, this is one of those things, I'm, I'm not, I'm not worried about a, a farmer or to this rancher putting farmworker housing on their place, I mean, it's more, you know, it, it goes back to access, you know, making sure we're, making sure we're doing it safely. Um, making sure the owner can handle it, I, I think.
Which is, is covered under the additional residences.
Right.
It could be, I should, you know. The question, do you want, excuse me, to create a, an avenue for farmworker housing that is, you know, different standards?
Well, and that, I think, you know, when we, we talked about this a few times over, it was, it was an attempt to try to make it a little easier for the ag community to do that, you know, cause.
And as it's set up right now, there are some, some different standards that, again, later in chapter two, sort of, farmworker housing versus additional residences. So that would really be the difference there, is the standards that would apply.
I still think limited's fine.
Well, and let's, let's keep it flagged, and then as we go through the standards in chapter two, we can.
Okay.
Okay.
Discuss it too.
Um, so kennel, there's a conversation, you know, if it meets certain standards, it would be allowed, and if it didn't, then it would be the, the limited use that's highlighted there. Um, some standards that I thought about, uh, that if the kennels are inside an enclosed building, you know, from a noise mitigation perspective, um, boarded animals must be inside overnight, whatever hours that may be, eight, eight P.M., six to six A.M., whatever that is. Um, two, two-hour drop-off pickup periods, one in the morning, one in the evening. I, I'm using this based on a boarding facility that I use, so that, and that's how they operate, um. And then minimum distance from property line, I put in fifty feet, if it's in an enclosed building, maybe it doesn't need to be that far. Um, and then how many dogs is, is a threshold before it needs to come in for some review? Um, I, my experience with zoning codes, six dogs over six months of age, so if you have litter, the dog's up to six months, you, you, you know, that, that doesn't count. Um, those are just some things that I've.
Shit, that could be my wife after one trip to the frigging Walmart, my puppy.
Well, that, that's why I, I mean, I'm just kind of putting some, some thoughts out there for standards.
Should we even drop this number or something?
Unless you live on this road.
So the idea is, is to create some standards and it's allowed, if it meets the standards, and then it would be limited if it exceeds them?
Limited with notice on the small.
It could be with notice, or, yeah, how, how are you feeling?
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think this is a pretty good approach, we just need to refine those standards, but we, I mean, you know, something we discussed last time, that chapter two, we didn't really have good standards, so this will give us a chance to.
So what I can do is I can kind of build these standards, and then when we get later in chapter two, getting all, all the different standards, we can get into that conversation in more detail.
Yeah.
But otherwise, as far as the matrix is concerned, if it's within the standards, it's allowed, if it exceeds the standards, limited use in A thirty-five, A twenty, limited with notice in A-five, rural industrial, commercial, and the two point five and one acre.
I think that's reasonable.
That work?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well done.
Um, moving on to, uh, places of assembly, schools, childcare centers. Um, just kind of just built out of the, the places of assembly, you know. I, I was seeing different regulations, if it's a religious assembly versus other types, so, um, that's why you see so many different categories here now. Um, using thirty as a threshold, a kind of above and below, that could be a different number, it could be forty, um. And, and other than childcare centers, um, then three or fewer non-related would be allowed, four plus non-related, um, would be limited use, so.
Where, where did that three to four number come from?
Um, as I was doing my, my research, um, that, that's where the, the numbers came from, um, let's see, my notes.
Research in the neighboring county codes?
Yes. And looking at the, um, kind of where, when the, the, that break is in, in state statute. Um, requires a state permit when it reaches the threshold, um, state statute, twenty-six, six, one oh-two, something I should have. I haven't specifically looked at that statute, I didn't get to that, that level yet, um.
So let's start with place of assembly, religious, less than thirty, allowed across all zones. Greater than thirty, limited with notice across all zones.
And so for schools, we'll kind of mirror, mirror that.
And there's a division in statute for twelve percent. Section twenty-six. More than twenty. Try to the statute. For the statute, that says, um, when would you know more than twelve children, or eighteen years of age in the yard? For, for the definition.
That's a childcare statute.
Yeah.
So where do they call it for twelve plus?
Are they saying that it, it's not regulated by the state for under twelve?
It just says.
I, I think that's just a definition for what they call a childcare center.
Yeah.
Probably versus a daycare facility.
Correct, right, okay.
Right, being my guess.
Yeah.
I, I don't know, I, I, I just, I, I'm looking at this, I'm thinking about some of the, the daycare centers we got going around here that have got, you know, more than, more than three kids, but it's still, it's not, it's not, it's not a nuisance to the neighborhood, so.
But an incorporated.
But, but, you know, but, I mean, if we're gonna, if there's gonna be any industry, we need to not be a pain in the ass to, it's, it's the daycare industry.
I agree.
So. And maybe, and maybe that's what we do, daycare, daycare facilities allowed, childcare centers limited, you know, we just base it on the, the definitions of statute.
The threshold in statute.
Sounds like a reasonable approach.
Yeah.
Can you say that again?
No. You get one shot. The, the daycare centers, daycare facilities allowed by right, and then childcare centers limited across the board, and those numbers being defined by statute.
Okay.
Mike?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
How about the places of, of assembly, the religious versus non-religious, separate those out? Um, we're, currently, they're all lumped together?
I. Place, place of assembly is a place of assembly, in my opinion, although I know.
It's just the difference, the only reason for separating out religious is cause they, they have federal protection for, for land use.
But if you have a range hall, and then on Sunday, you have religious services there.
Um, there's a high, there's lots of, lots of religious places that do activities every night of the week, so.
Yeah, and what we're trying to look at here is, if you got forty acres out there and you wanna build the next mega church, and that's the example you brought up, that's.
And then once again, more, more power to you, just make sure, you know, you, you, you get that good heart thumping sermon going, somebody gets a heart attack, you can get an ambulance.
So what we wanna do is make sure the impacts are addressed.
Right.
Yeah. I don't think for religions, the, uh, thirty is the right number, it seems a little, uh.
Okay.
We have some families, you get six of them together, you get thirty plus.
Put it up to fifty, I mean.
Fifty works for me.
Okay.
We need to keep our ears tuned to see if that number pops out anywhere in public hearing.
Okay. But then not, it's not necessarily separate religious and non-religious, have it the same?
No, I think.
Well, no, I mean, you, what, your point about federalism makes sense, so probably keep them aside, like, I can.
Okay.
They're not separate now, but you want.
Well, I, 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 I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, like I said, we're not, we're not worried. I mean, other than, you know, somebody, you know, is a, probably classifying their honky-tonk bar as a place of soup, you know what I mean? That may be my retirement plan, so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Carl?
Um, and then schools, also use the thirty threshold, do you wanna change that as well, or?
We go down.
Some of the churches have schools let them.
I, I, I think let's, let's leave it, let's leave it there, I mean, we, you get, you get more than thirty kids in a school on a daily basis.
I think it's size of the classroom, basically.
Yeah, we need to, yeah, I mean, you're, you're extending more than one class, it's, it's something we probably need to make sure we got.
Proper facilities.
Proper facilities.
Okay. Alright, then moving on to cemeteries, we need, wanna wait for John?
Let's do it.
Okay. Cause I think he was gonna do some research on that, but I haven't connected with him right now. So then the next item I added in, and this is because it's in, later in chapter, chapter two is events, and we haven't gotten into that specifically, there was, I'm sure a whole conversation about that, um.
Carl, did we skip, uh, storage facility or commercial?
We went through that for last time.
Is it just highlighted?
Yeah, we went through it last time, um, I think we need to define it. Uh, there currently is not a, a definition of, of storage facility. Um, I think, you know, we're talking about more like a commercial facility, not somebody, or somebody to store hay in their barn. Um, you know, but I think, have, so having a definition around that, I think is important. And then, so I can take a, take a shot at kind of drafting something up, that when we get to the definitions, we can, we can look at.
Okay.
I mean, similarly, outdoor shooting range, I, I think we want, I don't know if we, we can add something in, in the code to be clear, doesn't include shooting on your own private property, you know, again, it's a commercial outdoor shooting range, um, but that, that type of clarification.
Yeah, okay.
Um, so then kind of going back to events, um, without necessarily getting into the, the details in the, the chapter two, when it was written in twenty twenty-one, it didn't specify if it was allowed, the site plan review, um, it just, it set thresholds for events. Um, and so, as we were going through the updates, um, started looking at when did it, when did it feel like it became more commercial versus just a, a typical type of event? And it does not applying to think like places like wineries or things that would have events, just as part of their, their operations. Um, but so we, we created the three tiers, um, zero to hundred fifty, hundred fifty-one to five hundred, and then over five hundred. Um, the way we had done it for the twenty twenty-two change was, it was allowed for the zero to one fifty, site plan review between one fifty-one and five hundred, and then limited use for over five hundred.
On one fifty-one to five hundred, all limited, why no notifications on the smaller?
Oh, sorry.
Um, again, it was going from site plan review, which wouldn't have had notice, so that's why I just put it as, as the L, I, I moved it to the L versus the A. Um, that, that's the one really changed from where your red line currently would show, which we haven't had the conversation about yet.
Mike, what do you think? Talking about one fifty-one and five hundred, smaller parcel size. You're gonna have a big event, should your neighbors be noticed, you're gonna have two hundred people.
Well, in a commercial area, um, maybe not notice because it's commercial.
Or said, should it be allowed to be commercial? In all three? Or should there be some review?
Should be allowed, uh, as long as we know the facilities are there, or separate property or access.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
I mean, the, I think once you get to the five hundred, you definitely have traffic that you might wanna look at.
I, 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 this. I don't know if this is a bad approach here, you know, the, the bulk, now I'm going back looking at the, the original standard, I, I'm just, you know, which, which prob-, what problem are we trying to fix here? You know, I know we've had, you know, a couple complaints here and there on these things, not very many. Um, you know, we, we developed that in the twenty-one code because of, of some complaints that were going on, on some, some events up in the north, and I, I, you know, I think we, we spent a lot of time trying to make sure we, we fit in those guidelines, um.
Well, I think the main thing that we're fixing is in twenty twenty-one, it didn't identify any level of review, it didn't say it was allowed or permitted or limited or conditional, it just said these standards apply.
Yeah, this is good, whether it's perfect or not, I can't tell you. I'm tempted to leave it as it stands.
Uh, let's, let's, let's put a flag on it, have, have a chance to.
Okay, I mean, I know we'll get, we, we have that section to get into more, more depth.
Cause, cause, I mean, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to refine your, your definition of special events in chapter two with this in here, Mike. with this in here, my first.
Right. Yeah, one thing leads to another.
Right.
Okay. And that's, the last of the flag was until John gets here, it was not a third.
That's correct.
Do you guys have anything else on table two B?
No, that's it.
I'm good.
Carl, go ahead. So, so, let's, before we get on, so far, we haven't found the fatal flaw in doing away with the site plan. We may get there yet, but so far, we have not.
I, you know, it, it really depends on how, how you wanna go, I mean, it's, yeah, there will be some, some cleanup of the code to remove, you know, site plan review as a, as it got, you know, permitted use got moved to versus site plan review as part of a limited use review or conditional use review. I don't, I don't think it's a fatal flaw. It's, it's, um, the site plan review was, as it, it kind of evolved to, didn't have the same, call it technical level of review, like the limited use has been written in here, but it doesn't mean, you can't change that for the limited use. You know, when, and then it starts to get more into like, like in chapter four or chapter five, where there are specific standards. Water, access, wastewater, all, you know, different things like parking. I don't think that there, that, they were so close, permitted use, limited use, when, when this was written. I don't think that it's gonna be that, that big of a problem.
Okay. We're gonna find some.
There, there may be some areas where, you know, it said, like, if for a limited use, you had to do a traffic study, okay. We're not gonna say you have to do a traffic study. We had already adjusted that, though, right? You don't have to do a traffic study, you know, only if it looks like, you know, it's needed based on the traffic you're generating. But that, so, but those are the kind of things I think, I wanna make sure you guys have, you know, are thinking about as we get to those sections. And that'll be in chapter, chapter four or chapter five.
We ready to move on then?
Yeah.
This is so much fun, why would we stop? You still wanna be hurt?
So, do you wanna bring up the, the red line? I'm back to the. Page thirty-seven. So this is the, 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 the full red line version that we started on, uh, with on the ninth. And we got to, when we got to the matrix, and that's when we kind of pulled that out aside. So, go past the matrix. So this is where we left off, subsection C.
You guys all there?
Yeah.
Okay, go for it, Carl.
Okay, so subsection C. In twenty twenty-one, it was uses that are not allowed in any zoning district. Changing that, the uses regulated by ordinance in any zoning district, and then referencing the commercial use cannabis and the pre-hid mobile home ordinances, which would also be, um, part of the append, for the, for the land use code. Took out outdoor junk storage, um, but it's kind of, that's really separate from the land use code. I think that was your, your direction as well. Is it, is there anything else? That isn't listed here that we should list, or we wanna do anything different here? That you're aware of?
Robbie, I'm not looking at you too.
Well, I'm just, I mean, all of this was not allowed before land use.
Correct.
You know, in the specific development, so this is nothing new.
No, no, these are, it's basically highlighting those ordinance that are in place that.
Right.
Why does it say commercial uses cannabis? Is that the name of that?
I think that's the ti, that's the title of the way the ordinance is written.
Okay.
We'll double check that, but that's what we were trying, that's the change, was to try to reflect the title, actual title of the ordinance. And while commercial marijuana is not allowed in any zone, pre-hid mobile homes are allowed under certain conditions. So that's why changing the title of that subsection.
Okay.
Then it gets into the, how it, the code functions if something is not listed in table two B. Really, there's a couple changes on, on the, the next page, page thirty-eight, where it's defining different types of use, be it a principal land use, seasonal land use, temporary land use. And looking at the seasonal and temporary, didn't feel like for seasonal that it would be a temporary building that had to be removed, so we took that part out. Put in the hundred and eighty days to align with far, the, what we talked about, the farmworker housing and being able to haul in water for a hundred and eighty days. And then the temporary use would likely be more of the, the temporary structure, so that's where that language change came from.
I have no problem with that. That's consistent. Don, Mike?
Yeah, we, we.
Moving down to principal land uses, we'll take out site plan review. Um, that won't apply anymore. And then similarly, under subsection four, effective determination, we'll take out site plan review. I mean, other than that, just the way, the way it works, again, if it's not listed, it, it's assigned to the director to see where it fits in, you know, is it a principal use, seasonal use, temporary use, accessory use, et cetera. And then if it's a principal use, then it has standards, um, to apply of whether, you know, whether or not it fits in that, in that category. If it doesn't, then it would not be allowed. By practice, what I try to do is I go through the matrix and see if there's something similar, looking at the definitions, and then see where that, that use best fits. At this point, there hasn't been anything that, that has come in that hasn't fit somewhere, um, in, in that table two B, using that methodology. So, if there was anything else, we'll move on to temporary use and accessory business use of the home. Section three. First part is the use of recreational vehicles, um, or other similar structures as a dwelling unit. Here, expanded that to have when it's used for construction, it's temporary. The last conversation the planning commission had, changed it to twenty-four months, it was originally only ninety days. Then there was twelve months, and then, uh, at this point, it's twenty-four months. And I will note that an RV can still be used as a residence, so if you have, if you put in septic water and electricity, even though you haven't built your house, you hook your RV up to it, it's a permanent residence, then there's no time limit. It's only if it's on, you know, kind of the self-contained RV, um, is, I think, what this is, what this is getting at, for that temporary construction period. Then farmworker.
Can, can we add that, that very statement in it for clarification somehow? Into section three, B one, in some.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that allows a clarification.
Okay. So effectively, there's no timeline if it's, if it's connected, which then falls into subsection three, as a, as a principal re, use residence. Okay? Seasonal farmworker housing, use of RVs there is, is allowed. We'll, again, need to adjust the, the site plan review part of that and align that with table two B. Number three, an RV, um, can be used as a principal residential use. Provided it, it's connected to water, sewer, power. And then when there's five or more, whether it be an RV or, or mobile home, then it becomes a manufactured home part. And that's, there are standards for that later in chapter two. Which is referenced there at the end. Okay?
Questions on that, guys, in section three? A lot of time and effort went into.
I have none.
Could it be done?
So, time's over.
Okay, thanks, Carl.
Subsection C, farm stands, allowed use. The, just changing from, uh, road and bridge to county engineering, looking at the access for county roads. And then just kind of format. Firework stands similarly, allowed use. And with access, and if it's from a highway, then it's C don, if it's from a county road, then it'd be county engineering. Otherwise, there's no change for twenty twenty-one. Okay, moving on. The events, uh, so here, this is where we've created that three tier, those three tiers that we were just talking about in table two B. You know, a special event, separating that from a private event, if I'm doing, if I have a party in my house, that's a private event, that's not, that's not under this, regardless of the number of people. It's, it, this is nor when it's a, a special event or, or a public event, is where the standards really come into play. So this is a change in the, the number of events. And the, and the, the timeframe. Just some of the comments that we've heard with different applications that have come in. We have one pending that'll actually be coming before you. And how the neighbors felt about the number and, and duration of, of the events happening next door to them.
So. You know, this, this particular one brought a lot higher to citizens with, with the revision that was just rejected.
Hi, John.
Hello.
John, we, we're working on events right now.
Okay.
Did we finish up, you'd like to get back to private cemeteries?
Go ahead, wonderful.
Again, the, you know, trying to find that, you know, somebody, what they do, you know, what, what they're doing versus what the neighbor is expecting happening next door to them, trying to find that balance.
Well, might be kind of a misunderstanding, it says you're gonna, uh, you're able to have three events per county year. It did not exceed seven consecutive days. So you can party three times a year, up to seven consecutive days.
Seven days each, or seven days total?
Seven days each.
Seven days each.
Is, that, that's the attack.
We should put that in there.
Okay.
For each event. Good point.
So. You know, we've got businesses up there that make their living doing special events. And you're telling them they only get to do it three times a year.
No, I'm not saying they aren't allowed to do it, it's a matter of what, what, at what point does it need some level of review? It's a winery, and it's expect, and it, so it says in here that, you know, there's certain types of uses that are expected to have events as part of their operation. You know, the number of people start, you start to get into, again, traffic and, and wastewater and things like that.
But they can do it three times a year, seven days in each party, three times.
Right. Correct. That's allowed.
Mm-hmm.
With what we just did with the matrix.
What seven day event do we have other than the rainbow family?
I don't know, I just.
Is it cherry days, or whatever, jump rock days, or?
You know, a, a, an actual special event tip, you know, might be a week, might be two weeks, maybe, you know, maybe it's fourteen days, uh, you know, but yeah, I think that's kind of where you're going, what are the events and what would be that, that duration? Like, you know, Apple Fest.
Yeah, that's mainly weekend.
Exact, that's a weekend, right. I know it's a town, but I'm just using that as an example.
Only events I can think of that go over seven days, like the Cheyenne Frontier Days, or the National Finals in Las Vegas.
So, so where, where does this, where does this venue go? That person up there that's got a, uh, a venue for two hundred people, that can do up to two hundred people, and they have weddings two to three times a month. Where does that fall in this category?
How many, depending, so how many people?
Two hundred people, just, just throw a number, two hundred people.
Okay, so what we just looked at in the table two B would be a limited use. So you, you get a limited use permit, and you can, you, then you do, you're doing the business. You don't have to come each time you have an event. You're basically getting a permit to be in a venue at that point.
At that point, it's limited use. There'll be a site plan review. At which point the director can approve administratively, or if there's extenuating.
And, and, and I think maybe, maybe our problem is, is in the language, language here, you know, that. Because I don't see anywhere in that language that says I get more than, than three events a year, no matter what, the way I read it.
Okay.
I mean, thi, this language is, is very restrictive.
Okay, fair, fair enough, I mean, but that, that, the intent was that if you got a permit, you don't have to come each time you, you do an event.
Right, and once, once again, we, we, you know, that, what we took, discussed in, in the table two B, I, I thought was pretty spot on. It, it's just not lining up with our language.
Okay.
You know, and I, I think that's, that's our challenge here, is we need to adjust this language. That, you know, if, if you have an event, you know, small, you know, we, we label it a private event, you know, it, it's up to you. You know, if you, you throw a personal party, you piss off your neighbors, that's your problem.
Right.
You know.
And that, that is.
Right, and we've kind of got that labeled out there. You know, if this, if this is a special event that, that you're, you're making money on, if it's so small, that's fine, do your thing. You, but I, I just, I, I think the limiting language of the, uh, events per calendar year and consecutive days is, is confusing the process, and I think we just need to. is, is confusing the process and I think we just need to find a way to reword this whole, this whole little section here.
Okay.
See, I would start, we started with special events under this, I think we need to divide, define commercial events, because this is supposed to be for those temporary.
I, I think that's where C is trying to get is to call it a public event, but I think maybe that, that's where we can clarify that if it's an event venue, that you're just having to, you know, then there's no, it's just whatever the permit is for.
Yeah, so we got a commercial event and a special event or some.
I mean, cause it, yeah, on, once again.
Commercial event might be, I just have it once a year, but I have a permit that I can just do it once a year, I don't have to come in each year to do it. Or a special event might be, I'm just gonna be one and done, I'm not ever gonna do it again.
And, and that's where I, and that's where the original twenty-one language, you know, special event, if you had over five hundred people, special event, one and done. If it's over five hundred, then you need to come in and talk and make sure you got, you know, proper, proper safety and whatever. If it's, if it's a one and done and it's under five hundred people, do, do your worst. And that, that was kind of, kind of where the twenty-one code was, and that's, you know, we'd spent a fair amount of time trying to, trying to discuss that, figure out how to do that the best. But there's, there's a difference between that, that one and done person, between the person that does an annual event or the person that's got a venue set up for a weekly wedding or whatever. And, and, and I think, I think everybody understands that there's different, different levels of venue here and different levels of event. Our key is properly explaining them that it's, that, you know, we have a permissive language in our code. Instead of, you know, thou shalt not do this, and I, I think we solved a lot of problems out of it.
And I would really like to draw the line between commercial and personal events.
And, and I think, and I think, I think we do that, I mean, we, we list out, we list out private events in here.
Yeah, but we don't list out commercial.
And, and so that may be a terminology thing.
Instead of public event, call it a commercial event venue or, or added category.
Event venues are one of the commercial events.
Okay, so. One and done, you know, I mean, how do you, regardless of the number or?
One and done, I think we stick with the twenty-one length.
I disagree, I think we still need to have.
That's five hundred people.
If you got.
Yeah, if you got over five hundred people, absolutely, you need to come in and.
I'm even thinking a hundred and fifty people. I, and I can be persuaded here.
But I, so.
I'm thinking of impacts.
And. So in the, in the eye of the beholder here, okay? I, 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 I set up a, a, a whiskey festival at my house that's a one and done event. And I get a hundred and fifty-one people show up. I'm suddenly out of compliance, you know? The, setting that number at that five hundred mark was a matter of, I mean, there, there's a, there's a pretty big difference between, you know, a hundred and fifty people and five hundred. Especially in impacts. I, I, I get, I don't wanna be, I don't wanna be too restrictive.
I don't either, but also thinking about impacts. Somebody in residential subdivision has a hundred and fifty people there. And that's the likely outcome of this. Do they have?
They don't have park, they, I mean, if they're in a subdivision, they're not gonna have parking on the street, I mean, on the site, it'll be all through the streets.
Do they have?
Port of bodies, if there's, if they have food, you know?
All we're asking is a chance to say, make sure you got porta potty, you got place to park these things. And you leave access for emergency vehicles, like that's. And is a hundred and fifty the number? We don't want to be too restrictive, we gotta think of the impacts. And seventy-five cars, say, and a hundred. Mike, where are you at?
What, what event do we have in the county that is a big event, other than, you know, County Fair?
Well, we gotta think of important people.
Right, but what event can we have that draws that many people?
On the, well, let's get, that's my, that's my challenge here, is, you know, what, what problem are we trying to fix here? I mean, if we're just creating, creating rules for the sake of creating rules, I, I, I wanna make sure we're fixing the problem, and I, I wanna make sure that our language is, is not so restrictive that, you know, we have people just saying hell with it, I'm not gonna bother doing an event in Delta County, I'm gonna do it in Montrose County where I don't have to deal with those BS, because then we lose revenue.
Well, again, we're trying, this is trying to separate out commercial from private.
And, and once again, I, I, I think private's properly listed, I don't, I don't think we need to worry about.
Oh, I was working on private.
Okay, so you're, you're saying for a private event over a hundred and fifty people?
That's a lot of impacts because.
Traffic study we just got for, again, the application becoming for you is two and a half people per vehicle, this kind of the average. So with a hundred and fifty, that would be sixty vehicles, with five hundred, that would be two hundred vehicles. I mean, and so really, that, I mean, that, that's probably the biggest effect is, is the traffic and the parking.
And, and I've attended events in this county with pushing five hundred people, private events. Were there a lot of cars? Yeah, were some of them parked on the side of the road? Yeah. Was there a problem?
No.
But, but once, once again, I mean, if, if.
Was it in the subdivision?
No.
If you separate it, if it's in a subdivision, it isn't in the.
Well, that's a, that's a, that's a tough thing because we've got, you know, forty different parcels that are listed as a subdivision, so. You, you would have to, you, it would have to be a density standard, you'd have to set, I don't know how you do that.
I don't either.
How many houses per?
Well, and, and once again.
I only laughed, the, the planning department for years had this density standard and no one knew how to do it. It was just, it was this higher math that, uh.
Before.
That was before, before, before Carl's.
Well, that was, it, it went away with the twenty-one code.
Yeah, yeah, that's the only reason why.
So, so let's, let's focus on, instead of special event, the private events. And private events right now are listed at three per calendar year and seven days each. And then the, um, issue is it's allowed up to a hundred and fifty. Site plan review between a hundred and fifty-one and five hundred, so it'd be limited. And then over five hundred, it's limited notice. And Don, to your point, you know, you got two hundred people coming to Esther Wendell's wedding, by them. Should they have to get, come in, talk to Carl to get a, a site plan review? If I live on a one acre parcel in a residential subdivision. I, I'm struggling with to.
Do you wanna flag it and think about?
I, I, I think, I think this, this needs some, some deeper digging. I, I think may, I think maybe we need to look at, look at some of our events we have in this county and, and, and weigh in as to what the best option is.
And see if it is really an issue.
I, I, I said, I'm thinking about the things that I've attended. And I've attended some pretty big venues out in this county.
I, but again, I, I, and I agree, one and done has a different effect than, I have these party and I'm running an event venue with up to five hundred people regularly.
Right, no, and, and I don't, I don't think anybody disagrees. I, I don't think anybody disagrees with the, with, you know, that event venue, that they're set up for these large scale events, absolutely. We wanna make sure, you know, they got, they got proper egrets, you know, we, we wanna make sure they got proper porta potties, you know, we don't want, you know, we don't want people peeing in the creek like we heard about at our, at our first.
I don't want to hear that.
Right.
But, but we want.
But then the commercial that you're talking about would include venues such as at wineries, tasting rooms maybe, unincorporated. We just proved that one side. What other things would come to mind, Carl?
I guess if you have like a bed and breakfast or, or something like that, they, they won't have weddings, they'd be set up for weddings too, but maybe at a smaller, you know, smaller scale, I've, I've seen that.
Things, I don't know.
Yeah, concerts, I mean, you know, that, then, then you get, I think, the look, you know? I think it's, how, the fr- again, it's kind of the, the frequency, you know, is, is probably, and, and then the number of people. So, again, if I'm just gonna do one and done, that, that's different than I'm gonna do one the same, you know, ev- every year at, at this time. Which is different than, I'm gonna do a venue and I'm just gonna do it whenever I have a book.
So, so maybe we need a whole new chart under table two B. We have a special events section and then we have event venue section.
Right, as come, you know, some of the notices, okay.
You have, you know, and if, if you're, you know, if you're setting up an event venue and you're doing it under, if you're doing it every weekend and you're doing less than fifty people? Allowed, unproblem, right, who cares? You're doing something every weekend, you got two hundred and fifty people, yeah, we probably wanna make sure that, uh, it's safe. Especially event, I mean, it's, I, I, like I said, I just, there's I, I, I've really got, I've got issues with the way this is worded now, and we just need to make sure that it's, it's understandable and, and permissible.
Are you guys okay if we ask Carl then to take this back and work on the event, based on our conversations today?
Okay, I'll, I'll do it again, based on the conversation and see what.
See what follows up.
Yeah, I mean, let's see if we can look at some of, some of the stuff we got going on now and see if we can, can match it so it's, it's all, so we're not creating new problems.
And private is mainly one and done, commercial is one and done.
And once again, I mean, we can, we can list out the, private's already listed out.
Work, work on defining those.
And again, it's an impact based, it's.
Right.
And that's where you get the neighbors.
Yep.
Involved, parking on my lawn.
The neighbor starts charging like money out.
Some places have better access than others, for the safe in and out.
Well, and that, and that's it, you know, and.
There's a perfect place to put a wedding venue that has a ban stand.
And, and once, once again, I, I think of the venues that have happened in the last twenty-plus years and, you know, most of the time, these people, if they know they got a lot of people coming, they make, they make arrangements, they don't, they aren't intentionally just turning it into something bad, so. At some point, typically, the trust or citizens do the right thing too, with, uh, wrong government slapping upside the head, of course.
Is that building they have something in it?
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Moving on then, that's, that's flagged through the next one.
Okay.
Go back to cemetery.
John, you ready?
Sure. Table two B?
Table two B.
So, John, if I remember right, when the last time we left this, we were talking about private burials, private family cemeteries and.
Right, 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 so, yeah, so last week we, that kind of came up, we were looking at the table in regard to cemetery, we were also talking about the definition of cemetery. It's, you know, listed towards the end of the document. So I knew in the back of my mind, without having done any of the research at that point, was that the legislature has adopted some new laws in this realm, specifically Senate Bill twenty-one zero zero six. Uh, I've looked at that, I've kind of looked at, kind of where that falls into the various, various statutory schemes, both in Title twenty-five, which is basically health and specifically vital records, as well as, um, um, some of the mortuary science statutes and some different things like that. Long and short of it, I really don't know that the Senate Bill twenty-one zero zero six affects our conversation that much. What the state is really doing is, well, let's start off with, it's never been illegal to bury bodies on private property in the state. What the state is doing now is they're going into some, some different things of allowing alternative options for final disposition, and I use those words specifically because that's the word that they're going to. And they're talking about mulching human bodies, they're talking about, oh, there's some electrolysis, somehow they, they break the bodies down chemically. Um, they're also talking about natural burials, where there's no plastic cask, casket, there's no vault, there's no these, you know, simply somebody wrapped in a, uh, either a wood, a simple wooden box, casket, or some sort of a, you know, canvas tarp, you know, picture or something like that. Uh, which is more of a natural burial, all in all, that, I, that's all to say, looking at all that, I don't know that it directly affects our legal use code. So then I kind of gone all the way back to, okay, what does, what does our definition mean, or what does our definition say? And Carl read this last week, but I think it's good, I think it's actually a decent definition. Cemetery means a place that is dedicated to, used and intended to be used for the permanent interment of human remains. And may include a burial plot for earth interments, a mausoleum for vault or crypt, a columbarium for cemetery interments, or any combination of one or more of the above. And here you go, the term cemetery does not include areas of private property that are used for burials of members of the property, property owner's family. So I think our current definition is actually not bad. Does that, I mean, it probably accomplishes what we want to accomplish, at least from my looking at it, now whether you, you know, they're listed now under the twenty-twenty-one as, as P's, so obviously that would have to be addressed, so, does that?
And then that's where I had separated it to be, you know, private cemetery being allowed use while you're probably not on your own, you know, on your property versus a commercial or public cemetery would be a condition of use.
Okay, I don't know that we wanna do that, Carl, because in, in some of the statutes, specifically when you're talking about the health department, or the health, uh, Title twenty-five issues, um, they specifically, and, and, and sorry, that, the Title twenty-five, uh, two, two, one, eleven, is the process, is if somebody wants to do a private burial where you have to record a document that hat includes people, things like person's name, date of birth, age, the time of death, cause of death, the name and owner of the property, because it goes on to essentially the, the real estate records, uh, the legal description of the property, if a death certificate was, was recorded, what the reception number is, and then coordinates, one student lied, lied to, which you can understand, this is reasonable, people are gonna be burying. Uh, you don't want, you don't want someone dug up in a hundred years and the sheriff goes nuts, because, because what is this, right? Um, and, um, so, but it specifically says, this does not apply to cemeteries. So we, we, so if we go into this concept of private cemetery, we might be kind of backwards from what the, how the state is defining cemeteries. Does that make sense? Because we're not trying to regulate this, I don't think.
So for private cemeteries, can't we just not reference State Statute one? For private burials.
Private, rather than calling it cemetery, just call it private. Private burial, rather than calling it cemetery, just call it private burial, and reference whatever State Statute was.
Here's a challenge, here's a little bit, well, I'm tuned on it, because in, on the eastern slope, there are natural burial cemeteries that are going in. So people, so there was one, it's out in, uh, it's out in, uh, well, wherever, east of Denver, um, and someone bought eighty, eighty acres of land, and now they have it, that is, I think that is a cemetery, but they are only catering to natural burial.
Okay.
Which is, okay, fine, whatever.
Is it, is this regulated by CDPG?
I think that is. I think that is, I think, I think it is. I guess I'm saying, well, don't, don't go into private commercial.
Well, from a land use perspective, it's, am I doing it on my own property with my family, nobody's paying for it, versus I'm paying for a plot. That's, that's, I'm talking about the kind of the commercial.
And the health department, being where this, the green burials came up, they said more than three people on one parcel, then you're classified as cemetery, did you run?
I don't, I, I've read that too, Mike, I don't, I don't know that that definition's gonna survive. Uh, I don't know where that definition came from.
I thought it's the health department somewhere.
Can we not, for either private or commercial, public, just reference State Statute? Why do we have to get involved in?
I don't think we have to get involved in all of them, my recommendation is, is don't go into private, public, leave it at cemetery, you figure out what kind of review you want on a cemetery. We've got, I think we've got a decent definition. Either, I mean, somebody going through a process like this, or frankly, somebody ignoring this process, which I'm sure happens all the time, and burying somebody on their own property, that's not a cemetery, so we're not regulating that, but if it's a cemetery, we regulate it.
Okay, but again, why can't we just reference State Statute one? I'm not understanding.
What are you gonna, what are we referencing?
Any cemetery, any burial, private, public, commercial, whatever it is, just reference the State Statutes you just.
But this State Statute does not regulate cemeteries, it regulates private burials. It doesn't regulate cemeteries, I think to regulate, I think to regulate sta- uh, cemeteries is perfectly appropriate for land use. But you just have to decide what kinda, what kinda review you want on it. That's what I, that's what I would recommend. But I wouldn't split this out, private, commercial, because a private cemetery is not a cemetery.
Okay.
That's, that's my point.
Okay, but, so does the state regulate commercial, public se- cemeteries?
I'm sure they regulate them, yes, but they probably don't regulate where they go. You're concerned with where they go and what's the, what's the review process for? Is that, I think, I'm trying to, yeah.
Try and make this simpler, it's not worth it.
I'm trying to do the same.
It's not worth reviewing.
It's not.
So, do you have those listed as conditional or limited there?
Conditional.
For cemetery, conditional. And that was consistent with, uh, Mesa County and Montez County.
We're not saying it can't be done, it just takes a lot of overview.
Well, I mean, and, and, I mean, there's, there's legitimate issues, you have, you know, you, you don't want, you don't want a cemetery in a flood plain. You know, you, you ask, you ask some of the old timers about catching caskets floating down a river, kind of a flood stage, you know, not something to wanna do.
Well, there's so many feet from the sister and all that. The whales. Drainage down in the creek.
Those are the types of things that would be appropriate.
And that's why, I think, I think cemetery, I think we just leave it at, at conditional and go on, like I said, I doubt, I doubt we're gonna have too many cemetery applications come in, but we do recover, I, I do, but I do foresee, you know, the, the, the green burials are, are gaining in popularity, and I do foresee at some point in time, somebody setting up a, a, a green burial cemetery that, that will probably have this kind of review, we just have to make sure that all the, all the steps are right.
I think we had three green burials the last two years, something like that.
But they're, they've been private, I think, yeah. No, so, yeah.
Well, and I'm just gonna advocate that as, as the practitioner of, of implementing this, I think it, it is helpful to say private burials are just allowed. I think being clear, so if somebody reading it, you know, rather than going to the definition and saying, you know, cemetery doesn't include private property, well, what does that mean? Is it, you know, there's no review? I mean, being explicit that way, cause we've had, we had that question, and we're, we went to this definition, and as planners, we were wondering, okay, we, we assumed that that meant it was allowed, but it wasn't explicit that way.
And like we spoke last time, time will be of an essence in some ways.
So, Carl, I respectfully disagree, cause I don't hold a private cemetery as, I don't think there's a definition.
I'm saying private burial, I, 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 I'm one of them, so I doubt.
Okay, 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 so if we, yeah, if we couch it into the, the, um, the definition here, that's fine, I mean, if it's, if it's, if it's a private burial and a family member burial on private property, all right, it does, it doesn't, it basically is not a cemetery, but that's.
Because board health is now, like you know, is working through the, the organs on green burials program. So, we need to finish this so they can finish. Clear as mud?
Thank you, John.
Sure, of course.
Wanna keep going, or is that enough for one day and talk about schedule?
Uh, take some time, can we finish chapter two, do they?
No.
Got it close.
Let's pick a stopping point.
Um, well, we just finished, well, we were gonna come back to events. We had that as a stopping point and then come back to that and start there and then continue.
Yeah, I, I think, I, obviously events need some work, so.
And then after that is home business, so that'll probably have some conversation.
Well, you know what, let's, let's, let's step into home business real quick, just because, you know, we, we hashed this one out a fair little bit.
It's on page forty-two.
Um, you know, we took out, you know, we had in, in the twenty-one code.
Uh, down.
You know, it's, it was just accessory business in the home was, was allowed by, okay?
Keep going down.
The, the revision, the revision showed a, you know, there was a plethora of restrictions that was removed. Um, and then we went to this language here, is this the same language from before?
Same lang- no, it's not the same language from before, you mean twenty-twenty-one?
No, no, not from twenty-twenty-one, but from the language that we had discussed about.
Yes, that, you know, the, the last, when we had the work session on February twenty-seventh, this is the language from that.
Okay, so, clearly incidental, secondary to use of dwelling, to dwelling purposes, you know, which, which is, which is standard, I mean, it, it's a home business, it's supposed to be home first, business second. Utilize the same access as the dwelling, equate, be allowed one, unanimated, non-illuminated flat wall or window sign.
There's no size limit there, I think.
No size limit, I'm, I, I, I don't know that I I don't know that I agree with the non-illuminated part, but I and then, uh, outdoor storage must be screened from public view from a public view. And that one, that one could be a little tougher to match all the time. I'm, you know, I don't know.
I think that the point of that is, you know, just cause you, you see it from your next door neighbor.
Right.
Versus seeing it from, from a public, right of way, public road.
But if, you know, my, my personal business, I've got my, uh, my messy truck with my ladder racks on it, that's part of my business, is that instead of going to keep it in the garage.
No, that's not storage.
It doesn't have to be in the garage, if you have a fence, or you've got landscaping, it's not visible.
Yeah, we're talking about outdoor storage, and I'm thinking, if you got a one acre residential lot, you know, residential, you're in a rural subdivision. Again, what kind of impacts, and then, and then they're out there, you know, I'm.
If I do, uh, do woodworking, I got wood stacked up in the back of my shop, seen from public view, that, that's storage visible by the public. Let's say, I, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm, I don't, I don't think we want, I don't think anybody wants junk and trash and stuff piled high twenty feet, I just think, you know, this language has meaning. And, and the key is not being able to use this language as a weapon.
But again, if my business is rebuilding transmissions in, in my own shop, nobody wants junk transmissions stacked out in the front yard, and that's outdoor storage.
And that's.
And that's the extreme case also.
And that's, and that's why, I mean, maybe take out from public view and just leave from public road.
Or just must be screened.
Then that wouldn't potentially could be, could include the neighbor's property, private.
The unintended.
Right, so just give it as private or public road, rather than public view?
I, I would be happier with that.
Mike?
Yeah, and you know, the neighbor can screen, observe you from that, it's kinda like the livestock, oh, you know, you gotta fence him out, not fence him in type of thing. So, if you don't like what you're looking at, you have to fence it out, just like the fence out livestock.
Fence it out your neighbors.
Let's try screen from public road.
Okay.
And I'd ask commissioners, think about that one, just to make sure we got it right.
Uh, I want you guys to give us a thought about the, uh, non-illuminated part also, yeah.
Please flag yes for review next time.
Okay, will do. So, we flagged events and home business for a couple things, and then that will get us through section, that's section three. And move into section four.
Right.
Well, then I'd ask commissioners to pull up their calendars. Almost April, I'd like to for us to target. I'd like for us to target somewhere early in May to finish our review. To try to get it to the PC by their meeting, their regular meeting on Wednesday, May ten, is that possible?
I, I, I think that might be feasible, um, if we, if our meeting continued to be weekly on this.
We're gonna have some weeks we miss, but.
Um, I, I think, you know, because, once we get through chapter two, things get a little easier, um, chapter eight, twelve, chapter thirteen are gonna take some time. But, you know, the, the, the bulk of, the bulk of the challenges was, was in chapter two, chap- there are some, some in chapter three, but I, I think we've, we beat up chapter three pretty good and got it pretty much ready to go.
Chapter three is the lot size variance.
Right, and I think, I think we've, we've fought out that one, I think we've got some pretty good language on that one.
So, how many days do we have to work on this prior to?
I, I think, I think you guys better plan on at least four, four sessions like this again, at least.
Our next one's, uh, Wednesday next, three o'clock again. We can go two hours. We'll go three if necessary. Wednesday, March twenty-ninth, three o'clock. Let's go ahead and book it for three. For a good stopping point. Does that work for you guys?
Okay, it's at four in my calendar, I mean, we can make it three.
Yeah, there is, four in mine too.
We can make it three though, I got, I'm open to that.
So, three to five, on the twenty-ninth?
Yeah.
And then maybe we can get through chapter two, three, maybe eight.
Get through cemetery?
Yeah, we can get, if we get through two, three.
Need my own meeting for cemeteries.
What about April five then? I'm away, sorry. Doesn't mean you guys can't continue.
We might, we might have to.
Then I can. Let's go ahead and book one for April five then, same time, three o'clock.
Three, one, maybe different, one to three.
One, one to three, so I do.
One is up, or for you, John?
Shit, shit, Windows gone, let's just make it a.
Leave your greats out.
I, I mean, the question is, at what point do you also want attorney here?
Well, that, yeah, I mean, you know, John, we could, we need to, chapter thirteen's gonna be more ear involvement, so.
There's no changes that are needed, Commissioner says. Of course. Well, when you do chapter thirteen, clearly I need to be here, um, these other meetings, you know.
And I guess the reason we're going.
There's things that I wanna follow up on, I, I, you, you want me to follow up on, that's fine, so.
So, I guess the reason we went to three to five is so John could be here.
Correct.
Right, okay.
He'd get here soon, he's able.
Yeah, so, on the fifth, which is another ways, do you wanna go three to five, three to five?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Start with that. Then we were gonna skip the week of the tenth and pick up again on the nineteenth?
Yeah, cause we'll do all.
Yeah.
Towards the thirteenth.
And then the week of April twenty-four, I think we need to schedule at least two.
I am out that week. Unless you wanna do it without me, that's okay.
Kate was gonna take over.
I wanna name two.
Okay, Britney, you're on. Then that, let's go ahead and schedule one for the twenty-six, Carl, that way commissioners can go ahead and meet.
Sure.
Could he be out there? April twenty-sixth?
I will be, I, I return on the, the twenty-seventh.
Do you wanna do something on the twenty-eighth, would you be, give you enough time to?
Sure.
Let's do the twenty-eighth instead of the twenty-sixth, give us time then. Friday at three o'clock?
Well, let's go one to three on Friday, since John will be here.
I'm not, I'm, I'm at a conference, I'm not even around at all, so, I, I don't think you, I mean, I appreciate, I appreciate, yeah, I don't know that it's absolutely vital that I'm here for the whole thing, clearly chapter.
You're going, you're going to long distances, get out of this.
No, I'm not, clearly I need to be here for chapter thirteen, um, other things, you know, I'm happy to follow up on things if you wanna give me.
Well, do you wanna go three to five on Friday?
Friday, you're, I don't know, Wednesday.
No, not really.
That week.
That's a big number.
Yeah.
Okay, for chapter thirteen, John, can you do, can you be ready for the night, April nineteenth? And we'll work with your timing on that. We'll carve out one day just for that.
The nineteen-three and five?
Shake your head, yes.
I think I'm out, I think, hold on, I'll take you down from this.
That's April nineteen, that is spring break.
That's spring break, I think we're. That's spring break, I think we're, I think we're, we're gone.
Because I actually may.
What about the afternoon of the eighteen? You have a, you have a con-
Green burial.
Seventeen?
I can do the seventeen.
Oh, that's good. Well then, first week of May. Is Labor Day a holiday?
I don't know.
Well, that's, maybe Memorial will be the end of May.
Cinco de Mayo?
Cinco de Mayo. Let's do a Cinco de Mayo and Mike will bring the tacos.
Be bad.
Can you do May five?
I'll do anything for good tacos and whiskey.
May fifth is a Friday.
Correct.
Yes.
So do chapter thirteen on Cinco de Mayo. What time?
It doesn't matter.
One o'clock?
One o'clock.
And that's chapter thirteen.
Yes.
I'll send these invites out, and I'm gonna leave you on them, John, but Marky is optional, so.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Okay, then we need a cleanup meeting for final review, probably Monday, the eighth, because I'll be pushing Carl and his staff then to get the final ready for the tenth. And we should do that first thing in the morning, correct?
Yeah, um, I won't give the planning commission much time to see it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I, I mean, I think at that point, then there would be more likely to put it on the planning commission meeting through that, the second meeting in May or a special meeting or if they're willing.
Or they hold a special meeting just for this.
Right.
That's the other option.
Right. We don't have any projects, but, yeah, um.
That way there's not any projects.
Just to focus on the one item, right.
At the PC meeting tonight, would you lay out those options for them?
Yes.
And we'll still schedule, say, nine o'clock on Monday, May eighth for final review.
How many hours?
Two.
All these is work sessions.
Yes.
What time on May?
One, nine, eight.
So, let's, let's do, let's do it at eight, because I've got, I've got ten o'clock on.
Eight o'clock then, again.
No, I, I should be fine, never mind.
Nine o'clock.
Never mind. Nine o'clock.
Brittany said seven.
Let's do five. I want the new girl called the shots.
Well, she's gonna be taking around the meeting, so.
I'll be bringing my kid down to track practice at six AM, so I'll, I'll be here.
And let us know what the PC prefers in that.
Okay.
And, and could we even do a joint work session if they desire?
Sure. I don't, well, I, I, that, from a statute perspective, I don't see a review. You're being, with the thirty day, part of the thirty day review, or?
What, what's going on here? Just fi- just a final review.
Final review.
But when does the, this board, does this, does this board, does this board intend on sending a copy to the PC?
That's where we're trying to get to.
Okay, and when are you gonna do that?
Well, we are hoping to do it for their regular meeting on the tenth of May.
So the tenth of May is a Wednesday.
That's the planning commission meeting.
We have to adopt.
You have to do it on.
We have, we have to have a formal motion to send it to the PC.
And then be a BOCC meeting.
So the BOCC has a, would have a formal action, a post, regular posted meeting, to send it down to the, the PC.
So let's.
And they have thirty days left.
So let's put that on the sixteenth, May sixteenth, BOCC meeting. Let's still schedule a work session with Land use, with the PC on the week of May eighth. If they're, if they'd like to do that. That way we can walk through the changes and see if they see any unattended's or something like this.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
And that would be a night meeting.
That's when the planning commission meets, is, is the, the five thirty.
So May eighth changes the five thirty.
So that would be, the planning commission meeting would be May tenth.
Sorry, I spoke out of turn, I don't know what, what the chair is thinking about the May eighth morning meeting.
That's just the final work session review.
When would, when would you have a work session if you, you don't have to?
No, we don't.
But if you, when would you have a work session with the PC?
No, no, yeah.
If you want to, after the tenth, though.
The week of the eighth, is that what I'm hearing, or somewhere?
So that way we have some time and then get it on the sixteenth, regular session for the BOCC.
So just so I'm clear, May tenth is a joint work session between the USP.
No, not yet.
I'm just leaving the, the eighth and the sixteenth, are we good?
Okay.
Everybody got that, clear as mud?
Then did you want to review what you got, because you're the one sending out the invites?
Well, and, and I, I, I get nervous trying to plan this too far, because I, it may go smooth, it may not, so.
It may blow up, though.
I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't think we need to s- you know, hardcore this too much. I think, I mean, it's tentatively there, I, I don't think we need to stress about it too much, because it's gonna, it's liable to change.
Yeah, placeholders.
Exactly.
That's what I'm trying to do. Give us, give us some targets.
Okay, so I have March twenty-ninth, three to five PM. April fifth, three to five PM. April twenty-eighth, one to three PM. May fifth, one to three PM, with John on chapter thirteen.
Did you miss the nineteenth, April?
Yes.
So I didn't have nineteen.
We were gonna do that.
What about you, who are doing that?
Okay.
Because it's spring break, we.
Oh, that's right, okay. Keep going.
And I have, uh, May eighth, nine AM to eleven AM, final review, and May sixteenth, BOCC adoption.
Possible.
Possible.
No, that's not possible adoption, that would be.
Or I mean, um, excuse me.
Post to the planning commission.
In all these stations, there'd be more stations.
Correct.
With the exception of the sixteenth. Si- the sixteenth is a regular, it's already scheduled.
It's already at the BOCC, so we'll just put it on the agenda.
Agenda. Hey, Carl, you're clear on what we're asking you to, to look at between now and next meeting?
I think so.
We think so, too.
I've got, I've got help taking notes, so. We'll get something in Friday, so, and I'll try to get it in Friday ahead if I have to have a chance to, to think about it before coming in to the meeting.
Well, again, I thank everybody for their time here tonight, today. And again, I remind everybody here and in the audience that it is the responsibility of board accounting commissioners to develop this. And it is not Carl's responsibility, it is ours. Again, like I said last time, if you notice, we're asking Carl to develop this. So. Any in-person or, or social media derogatory comments about that are incorrect, this belongs to us. So thanks, everybody, for being here. Gentlemen, thank you for your time today, too.